Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming. My name is Dean Kelly with the Georgia Transparency Coalition. This is kind of an informal meeting to get your acquaintance of board commissioners. First time Walker County's had a board of commissioners since around World War II, so this is a big event for Walker County. And give you all the opportunity to ask questions of these commissioners and issues that you feel like are important to be dealt with in the coming year. We are going to open it with a prayer. Robert, if you would, please say a word of prayer.
Inspire heads and frank ways. To heaven and father, we come to you tonight, Lord. We thank you for the chance to be here, Lord. We ask you to lead and guide and direct each and every one of us. We ask you to watch over the board, Lord. Give us your wisdom, your guidance, and just make us to make good decisions or be good steward to the county. We ask you to watch over our country, Lord, in the difficult times right now. We ask you to lead and guide our leaders and just be with each and every one of them, Lord. We want to thank you for our veterans, Lord. Tomorrow is Veterans Day. We ask you to watch over our veterans, Lord. Thank you for their service. In your name, we ask this prayer. Amen.
Mr. Powell, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As you all know, we had our recent elections. And I'm going to introduce these guys individually first, then we'll let them talk for a couple of minutes and just kind of tell you what's there on their mind, give you a little background of who they are. If it gets known, then we'll go to questions. But number one is Robert Blakemore, District One. Mark Gaskew, District Two. Brian Hart, District Three. And Robert Stolz, District Four. And we're Shannon Woodfield's chairman. We'll start with District Four. Robert, if you'd just move.
Good evening. Thank you all for hosting us for us here tonight. And congratulations to all the winners. I look forward to working with y'all. I'm Robert Blakemore. I was born and raised on the north end of Walker County. I graduated originally in high school in 2007. I have a beautiful wife and five beautiful children. And I just, me and my wife got involved with some things on the north end of the county, so I decided to run for District One Commissioner. I work for my family business, coach a select softball team, and stay engaged in Walker County politics. Thank you.
Hey, uh, can you hear? Just speak right into the. Okay. Mark Gaskew, District Two. Grew up in Chickamauga, Gordonley High School. My wife Jane raised three children here in the district, two grandchildren here in the district. Been involved in construction most of my life, in some shape, form, or fashion. Got involved in municipal government 20 years back, I guess. Served elected official in the city of Chickamauga and then worked in municipal government in several different jurisdictions. Got in, just wanted to get involved and felt like that I had some experience, some knowledge, and some areas that would be helpful to the first Lord. Thought that it would be worth getting involved and putting the knowledge out on the table and letting the folks draw from it. If it's something that you can help the other commissioners, then great. If it's not, they don't, no harm, no foul. So just, like I said, want to be involved. Lifetime resident here. It's my home. It's where my family lives. It's where I plan on dying. So wanted to be involved. That's what we're going to do. Looking forward to working with all the other commissioners. Think that this board is going to give us a great opportunity to pull together some vast knowledge because each and every one of the elected commissioners and the chairs will all have different skill sets. And I think that when you put these skill sets together, that we're going to make a team. It's going to be hard to make. Thank you. Brian Hart, I'm representing District Three. I live in the Villanow area, which is, a lot of people don't know where Villanow is. Sometimes county workers even get lost coming out there. That's how far out there we are. But I was, I moved to LaFayette when I retired from the military in 1978. Graduated from LaFayette High School, enlisted in the military, stayed in the military for 30 years. And also in conjunction with that, worked for the city of Donaldville in all this ability spectrum, and also worked with their road department and with their solid waste industry over there. I'm currently retired from both positions, and I have a small farm over in Villanow. And when this board opportunity came up, I thought it was a great opportunity for me to run because I thought that I had a lot of, like, opportunity, citizen of Walker County, worked in a lot of areas that I've been working in, you know, with Shannon and the rest of the board members. So I'm excited with the opportunity to serve and look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Robert Stolz, District Four, Commissioner Layton. And I am a lifelong resident of Walker County. My wife Rachel lives in the audience. We operate a small farm on the south end of the county. I've been in primary care medicine for 25 years and health care for a total of 30, 40 years. Small business owner in a normal for about 20 years. So I'm excited to be sitting on this stage with these gentlemen tonight. I've known the district commissioners, all of them, for many, many years. And I think together we will be able to do a wonderful job for Walker County. It's kind of ironic. About eight months ago, I remember sitting or standing on this stage, surrounded by opponents. And after three elections, I am very proud to be on the stage. I'm honored to be on the stage. And like Mark said, I think together we are going to be able to build a lot of great things for Walker County. Very excited. Thank you.
Okay, I want to start off with a couple of questions. I want to address these to Shannon to start with because I want everyone to have a kind of understanding of how the transition is happening, what's going on with the transition. Shannon is the one that's pretty much headed that up since he's our, currently our sole commissioner. So you want to explain to us what y'all have done so far at this point as far as bringing everybody up to speed and handling the transition?
Yeah, it really started back when we were looking at the T-Splash for our county and having that on the ballot. And we wanted all candidates that were running for the elected seats to have a good understanding of all the projects and the details behind that. So individually, we invited each candidate in, even the candidates that was running against me for the chair position. We met all one-on-one, and that kind of sparked the idea that once we got through the primary, you know, let's all meet as a group of whoever is still in the race. So, you know, we were very open with each other as a group that not everybody was going to make it, but we still wanted to include everyone and have everyone there. So we met once a month for several months just to get to know each other better, to talk, share ideas, kind of Q and A, just really informal. And that was really, I think, kind of the first start because there was, at that time, there was seven of us still in the room. And then, once we are now all elected after November, we can't do that anymore. So we haven't done that. But one of the things that's very important, that was meant a lot to me when I was elected as sole commissioner in 2016, was to take advantage of the opportunity through the university system of Georgia, through the Carl Vinson Institute of Government, to go to new commissioner training. It's about a two-and-a-half-day event at the University of Georgia for new commissioners to go to get a big overview of everything that, from a high level, that they want to share with you and share the knowledge and information with you. And that's coordinated through the Association of County Commissioners, which is a phenomenal association that our county's a part of. But it's a lifelong learning. And each one of these classes, once you go through the new commissioner orientation, and they have classes a couple of times a year. The shortest class is six hours. The longest class is two days. It's 12 hours. And there's 96 classes. So it's truly lifetime learning about filling these roles and understanding county government and understanding how other parts of county government function and how our positions dovetail into that and how it makes everything work. So that's something I'm hoping that each commissioner will be able to go to in December. It's just an incredible training course that the University of Georgia does. So that's really kind of the next step. And I think it's the first week of December.
I will follow up on that a little bit. So this training, is this something that is basically a continuous time, continuous education as long as they're a commissioner?
Yes. The initial two-and-a-half day, it's actually required in this initial training. That's for new commissioners only. And so I even tried to see if I could go back through again. And they said, no, you've already been through once. But there's different modules that are continuous education learning. That's the 96 classes that gets everything into, you know, emergency management to grogues. I mean, there's a lot of different topics, and there's different modules under those different topics. And so each commissioner can kind of pick a pathway or pick what classes they want to go to or what's available. And they usually do those at least twice a year. They move those around from location to location. I had one opportunity this year to go to one, and it was in LaGrange, Georgia. And it was a two-day leadership class that Carl Vinson Institution put on, and they had it in LaGrange. So sometimes they're in Atlanta, Macon, Savannah. This one coming up in December is actually in Athens. So it gives a lot of opportunity to get training. And the Carl Vinson Group, you know, trains city council members, legislators, different parts of state government. So this is their focus of what they do is training people in government-held positions across the state.
Robert, we'll start with you since you're in District One. You kind of want to highlight the areas that you're most focused on or what you think are the most important to be addressed when this new commission comes together after first of the year?
Yeah, so the first thing, I guess, would be what I campaigned on is the road department. You know, those guys need raises. They're shorthanded. Make a list of equipment they need. I know we can't buy it all at one time. We get an itemized list, and the board sit down and focus and see what we can get and when we can get some more. And the second thing would be the youth. You know, I've talked to Shannon about it. Starting to put back in their youth fund for recreational purposes.
Is, of course, we all know that the north end has their own issues. But how about anything about economic development you want to work on? Or are there any crime issues up there or property issues up there, code enforcement, anything like that?
Uh, yeah, we, there's some crime issues that I think that would be a good thing. It's where the sheriff and trying to get at least one more deputy up there for rotation would be a good thing. And there's some good things economically coming through already that I'm excited about. And code enforcement, I have a whole different take on that. I'm against a lot of that. And I believe that people move out of the city and out of HOAs so they can have liberty and have freedom on their property, do what they want with it. So that's my take on that. You have a few people that complain. But I think the silent majority spoke November 3rd that they want the government to back up.
We will follow up on that issue probably here in just a little bit. I won't give Mark a chance to tell us what issues he thinks he needs from his point. Thank you. Well, like I said, we've got an opportunity to go from one head to five. And we've got awesome opportunities for economic growth in the county, the north end, south end, and in the middle. And there's some projects that I think are slated, different things being talked about. One of the key things in my mind to accommodate and to make these projects comfortable fruition is that we have to have some credential personnel in certain positions that we're going to, that need to be looked at. I think that growth as a whole is sitting there waiting on us. It's at idle right now. And I think that we're fixing to, with the economic recovery that the country's going through, that it's a great time for us to move forward in different directions. I think that overall, you know, Commissioner Woodfield and the team that's out there, they work hard every day to do the best that they can with what they've got. But we do need some, there's some staffing issues, I believe, and I believe there's some departmental issues. But that's, you know, that's an opinion, and we'll see how things come together. But I think as a team, I'll say once again, as a team, I don't think that there's anything that we can't overcome. So I'm looking forward to moving and working with each individual commissioner and working as a team to address some of these equipment issues, some of these personnel issues and things like that, that we may not have had funding for up front. And maybe some things we look at as far as allocation of funds and things like that. That's probably where I'm, in general. As I campaigned and talked to folks about the reason I was running, I would offer give them three reasons that I was running. And the first one was the death that Shannon tackled into office, which was about $80 million.
Little over $70 million.
He took office for a county of CTA plus or minus 1,000 people. That's a lot of, that's a lot of debt. And I think in this country, especially with our federal government, that it's just an understanding, hey, they're government, they're going to be in debt. But the way he took on that debt and has reduced that debt, even though he made a really manic property tax of way up, I paid property, tax on my property, it had to be done. And a few of the county realized that and accepted that. And so number one priority for me would be to continue that debt reduction. Now, we can't just quit doing everything or reducing the debt. But I think in the next four years, hopefully, we can get the majority of that gone. And that would be just an amazing thing for the citizen of Walker County to be able to say, hey, we don't have any debt in the county. The second thing was is infrastructure. Now, recently, we just paved the road in, over where I live in Villanow. It really needed it, and it's good. When you look at infrastructure, well, maybe the first thing about infrastructure, when I went to New York City with a youth group on a mission trip with a church in 2001, and being an engineer and working in city-county governments, you're looking around at that huge city. If you've ever been there, you think, man, how did they maintain the water lines, the sewer lines, the sub lanes? The power system, there's so much to maintain. And so when you look at that, and you think, well, we paved East Mersey Road. Well, yeah, we did. But 40 years ago, that was a dark road. We put a tar and wrapper on it. We put a little paving on it. So we improved the infrastructure. But still, the bottom aisle of that road, you know, to build that road properly, it should have been milled out. You know, 10 inches of the base, you know, 80 inches of the base paving, binder topping. We can't do that. So we have to balance our infrastructure improvements with costs involved with it. Not only the roads, but the building, but the bridges, there are a lot of things that have to be looked at. With that debt, we continue chipping on that debt and maintaining our infrastructure. When that debt's gone, then we can really, really improve on that and make our county a better place. And the third thing was employees. Robert mentioned it. And I'm just, earlier I worked with the city-county government for 30 years. And I've talked to Mr. Geely out in the landfill there about it. When I went to work in city government 30 years ago, our average wage for truck drivers, operator was $10, $11 an hour. 30 years later, that average wage is $13, $14 an hour. Well, you know, if you've been living for 30 years, and if you look at a gallon of milk costing you 30 years ago, look at a gallon of gas costing you 30 years ago, it's not at all in line. And I think all city governments have that problem. Now, I'm not saying we're going to go in and give everybody a $10 an hour raise in order for the county. We can't do that. But as we chip away at those first two items, then we can really look at improving the wages of our employees because we can have all the equipment in the world in the county. We can have all the roof, we have all the vehicles without our employees, we're nothing. So our employees are our most important part of the county. We really need to look at that, and if we chip away the first two, add two now. You have issues in my district, and people laugh at me when I say that. This is very true. When you get on the east side of Taylor's Ridge, people don't want anything but the road paved, the ditches mowed, and leave. And that's true. They know because it's all agricultural. And they want to stay agricultural. A lot of families over there depend on the poultry business, depend on the road problems, depend on the cattle business to survive. And they like it the way it is. They live there because of that. Now, as we get closer to the city of LaFayette, I think the county and the city have worked together also, and we continue to work with the city and the city council to improve industry in that area. That's speaking of my district. All right?
Okay. I'm going to swap with Shannon here while I'm speaking.
Oh, okay.
Did they have this?
I'm thinking my butt.
Since Robert, you're so far down here. Everybody, I'll be a little bit more.
Thank you, thank you. So in District Four, very diverse, I guess, from the south end of the county to the north end of the county. And so one of the things I would like to ensure is our agriculture, just like Brian was talking about. A lot of agriculture in the south end of the county. And I want to ensure that our farmers are not burdened by regulations that hamper their businesses. Farming is a big business in Walker County, and so we do not want to burden our farmers with restrictions that can impede on their, on their businesses. The second thing, infrastructure, you know, we definitely need to stay on top of our roads. In District Four, West Cove, we need some help. And so definitely that's something I would like to see moving forward. Economic development, the, I feel really good about the north end of the county seeing an economic boom. I truly do. So that will impact Flintstone, Channing Valley. We're seeing new homes go in there. I think that is the area where we are really going to see a lot of growth. Walker County is a great place to live. People are finding out about it. So I think we're going to see a lot of folks coming into our county, and I think it's great for our economic development.
Shannon, I want to address another question. You just kind of laying the foundation of where we're at now. I haven't looked at it yet, but I assume you have your budget for next year out there. You going to kind of give us a synopsis of where we are debt-wise and what the plans may be financially as we look forward into next year?
Yeah, it's like really, okay. Yeah, it's very encouraging to be here and hear the ideas and suggestions and the visions that we're hearing from these group of guys here tonight because it's very encouraging because everything that they're talking about is very achievable. It's some things that we can really do and plan and work together. And it's a lot different conversation than where we were four years ago. And the conversation was more about how do we survive financially and how do we make payroll? And so we have, as Brian mentioned, and he gives me a hard time about this, even publicly once before, kind of give me a hard time here and all good fun. But, you know, we did have to raise property taxes that first year. But we only did that one year, and we have held to the principle that we never want to do that again. We want to continue to grow our sales tax revenue, maintain our overhead the best we can, and let the growth work for us and not have to raise property taxes again. From a budget standpoint, we are on a fiscal year, so our budget cycle started October the 1st and will run through September. And so we do have to have a balanced budget every year. The budget is on our website under the financial section. It's probably somewhere around 110, 120 pages of detail. It's in two different sections. It's the way it has to be to meet the state regulations. But keeping that balanced budget is very much a chore because things are changing. I mean, just to give you an example, we've got a couple more elections coming up. And I see our election chairman here tonight. I know one of the conversations he's going to be having very soon with me and probably some of the board members, he's going to have to have a budget amendment because he's got two more elections that none of us knew was going to happen. And I think, I think the elections are about $30,000 or so each. I might be off on my number there, but they're quite expensive, but they're necessary. So that's, we're going to have to figure out where that money's going to come from. So that's probably $60,000 or so that we've got to move because we've got to hold those elections. So the budget process is something that the board will work on collectively. But when you set those projections out like any other budget, sometimes you will have to make some modifications. But the budgets for probably the last 10 or 12 years, everything that we could find is online. All of the audits back 20 years or so, we're on the website. So there's a good amount of reading. In the past administration, all those things were open records request. And so all of that now is on the website for everybody to view and see. But we have done well as a county with maintaining revenues through the COVID. You know, there's a lot of communities, I know I was reading about New Orleans as an example. They're so heavily regulated, or so heavily dependent on tourism. They were having to make 10% pay cuts across the board to all of their city workers. And then also, every city worker had to furlough one day every 14 days. So we've not been in that situation, thankfully. Our revenues have actually been up because people are buying more at home and shopping at home. And then also, starting in April of 2020, all online sales through Amazon and some of the other big facilitators, we now get sales tax on all of those transactions that shifted to our county. And that took place across the entire state. That legislation was put in place because our state was losing millions of dollars of sales tax revenue that was rightfully due each local jurisdiction. So we're in a good position. God's been good to us. We was talking all ago about paving roads. Every time I can say publicly, thank the citizens for voting and passing T-Splash back about three years ago. That has really been a blessing and has allowed us. This year, I think we're finishing up on about 42 miles of road paving this year. We're going to be paving over 50 miles of road starting next year. And that really ties into that infrastructure. We were way, way far behind on road paving. Prior to coming in, I think there was around 6 to 10 miles a year. I think to keep up long-term is something the community and the board needs to be thinking about long-term. If we don't pave at least somewhere in the neighborhood of about 40 miles of road a year, based off the number of road nails we have, we're something close to about 700 miles of road. If we don't pave at least about 40 miles a year, we're going to get, we're going to be sustainable. We're not going to be able to keep up. And so we're going to have to always be thinking that. If we can get up and stay in those numbers in that 40 to 50 miles, we can end up very, in a very few years, having some of the best roads in the state. We've made a lot of improvements. We've been focusing on primarily the commuter roads and the high-traffic roads. And we've made a lot of good progress there, but there's still a lot of work to be done when it comes to infrastructure. And it's all about, you know, getting those dollars and putting them to work.
Couple of questions. Number one is, when you came in $70 million of debt, approximately what is our debt at this point?
I haven't looked at it in a couple of months, but we're probably somewhere around $28 million in total liabilities, which would also include the pension fund liability, which is about $4 million of that. That would include all liabilities, payables, funds, any leases that are still outstanding. And so if we stay on this trajectory and our revenues can stay where they are, and if we can stay from out of any big storms or crisis or disasters, we should be able to be out of debt in four years and have no debt, no liabilities, have the pension fund fully funded. And like Brian mentioned earlier, once we get there, in four years, we'll go by fast. When we get there, I mean, it's just really unlimited of what this community can do. And if revenues increase and some of this development that looks to be very hopeful might get done faster than that, but it's very doable in four years.
You just talking about the roads, 40 miles a year. What's the cost of doing those 40 miles each year?
Yeah, you know, some of the roads that we've done recently, we've had to do a lot of deep patching because the base of the roads were in horrible shape. And when you do that, a lot of times you're getting up around $180,000 to $210,000 per mile, average. If we have roads that we can go in and level and top coat, you're getting down more around $150,000 per mile. Some of these roads that we can go in and mill and then level them out and top coat, you're going to get up around $160,000 to $175,000 per mile. So the worse the road, the more it costs to go back and do it the best we can. And, you know, Brian made a point earlier, I mean, and even the paving contractors tell us, you know, how much do you want to put into this road? I mean, we could go in and completely rebuild and be looking at probably $800,000 plus a mile. But a lot of our roads, that's not really needed. They're more rural. But even our main commuter roads, we're having very, very good success. And now that we've had two or three years of this plan that we've been working, and Carl Landbauer's a road superintendent, he studies those and evaluates the thickness and the problems and all, and makes recommendations of how we approach that road. So we don't just go out and say, oh, we're just going to pave this road, and they're all the same. Every road is evaluated and looked at and approached on repaving differently. And the weight and the amount of asphalt and the amount of patching and all this will vary from road to road. So the cost will vary depending on how severe the road is.
Okay. At this time, we're going to open it up to the floor of the questions that you all may have. Only thing that we ask is you be respectful, you know, ask your question. If it's something that's more of a personal nature, that's something you may want to get with them after the meeting or another time. This is going to be more about what's the nature for the county. But by all means, any questions that you have, feel free to answer. Who's got the microphone? Okay. Raise your hand if you have a question. We'll start.
Raise your hand if you have a question, we'll start. Right over here.
I got two questions. One is, on the splash fund, how is it allocated? Does each district get the same proportion of money? And the second is, how can you identify what rules need to be paid for and what law?
Okay, the question was, is how are the splash funds allocated? We actually now have two types of splash. You have the T-Splash, which those dollars are on, a hundred percent earmarked for transportation improvement, and so, we look and evaluate the roads and look at the high travel, high commute roads. We did have a study done, a couple of years ago, we had a engineering firm come in and give us a database of all of our roads, and come in and identify all of our culprits and GIs, locate those, and also give us a score on all those roads. So we look at that database, but that database doesn't tell you how highly traveled that road is, and so, we look at the score and the severity of the road, and we all look also at how highly traveled that road is. And also, a lot of what we were doing last year was looking at the roads that ran around our schools, from a safety standpoint, and a lot of traffic in and around our schools. So we did a lot of paving in and around our school systems in the unincorporated areas. And then also too, we tried to spread the love, so to speak, around the county and not just spend all the money in one part of our community. Uh, we try to allocate and hit those main commuter roads in every community, and, and we lay that out on a map where people can see that, so we are trying to balance those dollars, because those tax dollars are coming in from all the citizens all around the county. Now, on the new splash, which is more for capital improvements of, of a broader slate, that slate of projects was outlined and put on the referendum back in November, and those also can be found on the, on the website, because there's allocation, there's some dollars in there for paving, but there's dollars in there for infrastructure improvement with our buildings, there's allocation in there to upgrade our nine-one-one center, uh, communication systems, and so, those are counted in buckets that's laid out, and then, let's say for an example, a communication tower, we've got, I think, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated, and that's going to be a shared project with the city of Lefebvre. I think they had two hundred and fifty thousand in their bucket for the communication tower. So a million dollars, well, if we come up and it costs less than that, say we've got fifty thousand dollars less, then the board can decide where they want to take those dollars and maybe move them into another bucket of focus to help on other projects, once that project is completed. But we don't want to be moving money from bucket to bucket until those projects are completed, but the board would have the authority to, to make those decisions at that time.
Uh, I'm sorry, do you have a follow-up? Okay. Um, I want to talk about code enforcement for a minute. Um, that's kind of the sensitive issue around the county, um, like Brian just mentioned earlier, out there on his neck of the woods, they want you to come in, pave the road, clean the ditches, and get the heck out of there. So my question, and I want to get all of y'all's input on this, is, do we need a universal? Because Walker County's a large diverse county. Do we need one set of codes for the whole county, or should the codes be more custom designed for each area? Robert, we'll start with you on that question.
I think they're definitely different from the north end to the south end, but I think that would be too far afield. I think one set of codes for the whole county, but I think we need compliant-based, not complaint-based, not compliance-based code enforcement. So if somebody calls and makes a complaint, they will go out and say about the code, and what we can do about it. I'm not against code enforcement, I'm just against showing that I don't pay them through.
All right.
Uh, that's, that's a, a hot button, and it's something that's dear to my heart. I've spent, uh, many years in code enforcement, I carry credential in it now, and, uh, Robert's exactly right, there is not one shoe fits all. Uh, the, the, there's a, a big misconception, codes and ordinances are written for interpretation, and so, when you have people or personnel that are trained to interpret, then it makes it a little easier to use a general to cover all, when you have the ability to interpret for, for each individual situation. Codes are, are necessary, uh, but they really are, most of it is based off of life safety, that's where, where it all really starts, and that's, uh, that, that's, that is important. I, I, I understand about property rights, I own a farm myself, uh, and, and own a couple of pieces of property. I understand that I, I don't like to be told what to do on my property, however, I also understand that what I do can adversely affect someone else, and now it's not just my problem anymore, I've spilled over onto someone else. So, codes, codes are interesting, and we, and we've got some stuff here, that's, that's something that we're going to have to look at, and there's some revision that needs to be done, there's some things that are probably on the books that, that like, like I've heard Shannon say before, that probably been there for thirty, forty years, they're, they're obsolete, they don't have any, don't have any impact today, uh, and there's some things that we need to look at that would move us forward, but codes are necessary evil. It's in all that how you, um, approach people with it, and what the end result that you're trying to get. So, um, I, I do think that codes are necessary, um, building codes, and here again, I think we, we talk in general terms, everybody talks about code, code, code. Well, what are you talking about? You talking about building codes, you talking about safety, you talking about energy codes, you talking about, uh, or county ordinances, nuisance ordinances? See, these are all different animals, and so, uh, it's just important that, that, uh, the understanding of the ordinances and codes is the important part, then you can actually take it to the field and enforce it and work on each individual situation, because no, one, one shoe does not fit all, and that's why it's written for interpretation.
I agree with Mark. Uh, we, we do need one code for the county, uh, but it, but it, but it, but it's how you, how you talk to people to communicate that code is important as well. Uh, I, I met Mark several years ago when I was building a place, and, and he came out and we talked about things, and being user-friendly with the people that are using those codes and ordinances is, is, is key. Uh, I've been to a lot of meetings Shannon's had in the last couple of months, I submit some new ordinances that he's looking at, and some people are complaining about them, and I understand that, but again, Shannon, it's, it's good to point out that, hey, look, we're not out to get you, get you, get you in any one of these cases, we're just trying to make the county a better place, not only for you, but for your neighbors, so I think it's important to remember that, and it's important to remember that the property owner, whoever owns property next to you is looking at you to maintain their property, so their property is not declining, so. Like every case, it's been looked at separately, but still, tying everything back to a code system.
So kind of to reiterate what has basically already been said, I agree with the complaint-based code system. Uh, codes are necessary evil. Uh, a property owner's rights and their individual liberties are very important to me, so, um, knowing that we do need codes enforcement, um, I would want, uh, codes enforcement officers to be respectful, property owners, uh, present the situation in a very professional way, and, uh, like Mark said, I mean, each, each situation is different, and so, you have to take it on an individual basis, and so, but I feel as though this board together, we can make some really strong decisions on codes enforcement that will be great for our county. Thank you.
Let me, let me, I want to ask you a follow-up. You know, just sitting here, Mark made some good points that I think kind of sometimes gets lost in the conversations about codes. There's a lot of different moving pieces to codes, because, and he's hit it square on the head, the, the life safety is probably farmost the most important, and you have electrical codes, building codes, uh, but probably the one that is the most talked about, as he referred to as the nuisance codes, the, the trash and these type of things that we, that we deal with, and so, but I would not personally want to live in a community that didn't have codes, just because of the life safety, uh, making sure that when you contract with someone to build you a house, that the, the structure, the footing, the foundation, the electrical, the plumbing, all of those things meet a international building standard. I think it's very important, so I'm glad Mark brought that up, that it doesn't get lost in the wash out there. When you say codes, I think we do, to do a better job narrowing that down as, as a team, uh, as we move forward, so it's not so confusing.
I appreciate that, Shannon, and you're exactly right, and what I wanted to just inject real quick was, codes are, let's say, let's say, for instance, building codes, those are minimal standards. We have to understand that when we're enforcing, these are minimal standards. If you're, if you're barely making the code, you're bumping the body. I mean, it's, and that's the truth. Um, so, yes, sir, they are different, they are all different, and, and the key is going to be, um, in any type, whether it be building inspection, Brian's done, and, and code enforcement as you've done, and I, and I've done for many years as well, um, the training is, is, is really key, and we've got to, you know, that's what we want to look at and try to step up and get our folks that are doing it to understanding, if they understand what they're out there doing, it's a lot easier than when they just, you know, go out thinking they're out to get on somebody about trash or high grass, but when you explain about the vermin infestation and, and disease control, and the things that all come together in it, it makes, you, you paint a broader picture, and it's easier for people to understand. I think that's something that I think the board will do real well together with, is trying to get a better understanding for folks, where that when somebody shows up, they're more willing to comply when you, when you address the issues for the, for the right reasons, and treat them the way they're supposed to be treated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, anytime you want to chat on any of these issues, that's what you're here for.
In the common sense of doesn't fit all, where does zoning fit in to making this work? And who determined that? Brian's going to make first, if you'd like to know.
Comment on that as well, as your commissioner.
Well, again, zoning and codes are kind of, you know, two different things. Uh, the, the zoning, zoning is, and I know it can be interpreted different ways also, I understand that, but the zoning kind of tells us what we can be aware, what we can do in certain areas, and then the, uh, of course, and we do have a centralized zoning, it had its sense. We have, Mark, I'm going to put it out.
It was before, I, it was in the early.
Maybe around eighty-three, something like that.
Right, so it started long ago, and it's been refined a few times, and, and probably refined some more, but, uh, so, it's kind of two different animals, and it, does that answer your question? That's what I see.
Well, zoning.
You're, you're, you're right. So zoning, planning and zoning, if, 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 if you come into the county as a new, new person just moving here, and you're wanting to build a home or build a business or whatever, zoning, if you start at the planning office, that's where you'd start, and you would see what the zoning requirements are for that area. You know, we've got, uh, three, I think, three different residential zones that I'm aware of now, agricultural, we've got, there's, there's several different types of zones, and in each, each zone, there are allowable practices, what's allowed to be built, as Brian said. So the zoning, zoning is a way that you create areas, you, um, if you've got single-family dwellings or neighborhood, it's all single-family houses, well, that would make sense that anything that we're adjacent to would be an R, would be an R one, a single family. You don't want a duplex in the middle of a, of a single-family neighborhood. However, you've got areas that you've got, you know, for, uh, multi, two, two-family duplex, then you get into town, and so there, zoning is for the place, is to control the placement of, of what can go in what area. The codes are enforced in all. In other words, it doesn't matter if you're R one, R two, R three, agricultural, whatever, if it's an ordinance or a code of Walker County, it would be enforced equally the same, wouldn't the, the, the planning, your zone would not affect how your, your codes are enforced, and it wouldn't affect the difference of codes. They, they don't, they don't get changed for the zoning. But zoning and planning is where it all starts, and that's where, that, that's where someone, if they walk in off the street to want to get, say they want to build a home in Walker County, then first place they go is to the planning office and find out the information, and then go from there. But, but the codes themselves, building codes, and then the county ordinances, which are, well, when you get into nuisance ordinances and things like that, we work under the international property maintenance ordinance, and that's something I actually brought to the county years ago, when I got credentialed in it. Um, and it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a small ordinance, but it covers a lot of bases as far as giving us, um, the ability to try to keep the, the standard of living to what we're used to, what we want to keep, and, and save for everybody, so. I, I don't know that that answered your question either, but they're, they're two different entities, one serves one purpose and one serves another.
Well, both these guys are articulating as correct, and I think maybe another way in its simplest form to look at zoning, in, in most cases, zoning will protect the people and the interests that are already there. Because when zoning was put in place under Roy Pearson's administration, they went around, and the zoning that got adopted was what its current use was.
Right.
And so, your zoning really protects what is already there. So the great example Mark used, that if you've got an R one residential area, it protects those property owners to make sure somebody doesn't come in and put a bullet in the alley right in the middle of it.
Exactly.
You know, something of that nature, and so, yeah, you can have zoning changes and zoning modifications, but I think its pure simplest form is to protect the people that's already there.
Very good analogy.
Any other questions? If there's no questions, I'll follow up on this a little bit. Uh, you had your event here, what was it, two years ago, it was about the ordinances, and you're changing the ordinances, I think you had like three hundred people show up?
That's why we're talking about chickens.
Yeah. And that's kind of what I'm alluding to, again, on the south end, that's a different environment than what you have on the net, on the other end, so my question is, should we have something kind of like zoning, where, uh, you would have a different set of ordinances for things such as, add livestock, whatever, cat stalls, whatever, than we would in, like in Roswell, which is a city area?
But there already is to a higher degree, especially the animal care ordinance, uh, it's broad, much more broader in agriculture for the uses, and so, uh, there, it's already there to some degree now. I'm sure there's always areas that we can look at to improve or learn from other communities, but there is in that animal care ordinance.